It is right to recognize how different we are, our talents, our dreams, our backgrounds, our occupations, our religions, and even our politics. And our differences, we can think the same thoughts and move together toward a common goal and create a Greenville the next generations will be most proud of. As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. We stay focused on the objectives we have for the world: peace, tranquility, true brotherhood of man, freedom from hunger, from oppression, and from sickness. Give us the wisdom and discernment to make the right decisions tonight for this city we all so deeply love. Let us continue to strive to make a better world and a better Greenville, and we pray that you will give us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions for our future. In the name of the God we acknowledge and honor. Amen.
Amen.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWerkin.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brisington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White.
Here. You have the minutes of April 11th, which will stand approved as submitted, unless there are any objections. Seeing none, we have the moment for three minutes to speak to council. Jack Logan had signed up there. I was looking around, didn't see you back there. Jack, you're the steward, so you get your three minutes? Thank you, sir. Just couldn't see you back there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for being back in the City Hall again. The last time I stood before y'all, a couple of times, and my tone wasn't in order with God. And I very, my tone was directed at our city manager, Mr. John McDonald, and our chief of police. And I'm a man, and I'm a man of God, and I talked this old Ms. Fleming and other community leaders, and I wanted to say to y'all, I'm sorry, but come to y'all kind of reckless. The truth, what I stated was the truth, but the tone was not of God, because life is too short, and I'm trying to build me a home to go home to God. And again, to the chief and to Mr. McDonald, I'm very sorry for the tone that I addressed this council with about them. And something more, while I'm standing here, Mayor, I was talking to, I guess, Mr. McDonald's secretary. Recently, I was walking down Main Street, and I was on the telephone with Mayor Protem Lillian Fleming. And that was the weekend the fishermen's was in town. And we were, she was telling me to go out to the TD Center to have a great time, and there was a little Indian native child that was walking slightly in front of me. And there was a white female speaking, preaching the gospel of Jesus in front of the Peace Center. And that little child turned, Mayor, and he said, "Mommy, mommy, she's preaching about Jesus." And he started running back toward her, and he said, "Amen, mother." And I told Ms. Fleming, "Ms. Fleming, I have to go." I said, "I've got to take this child across the street to this West Minister preacher." And we did that, and I want to address the council and say to y'all, Jesus is still alive, even without small children in the city of Greenville. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, Jack. And Jack, we have a broad view. Sometimes you have to get a little spat with us, and other times you don't. But I want to tell you, I want everybody here, just so history, people know the history. When we had a real serious problem downtown, I mean, really serious problem downtown years ago with young people congregating in front of Falls Park and everything, and it was, I mean, we talked, picking up furniture and throwing it around and all that kind of stuff. It was an endangerment situation. Jack and a number of others came to us and said, "Let us take this. You guys, it's a sensitive topic, let us take this." And he put together a group of gentlemen and ministers and laymen alike, and went downtown after weekend after weekend after weekend until this thing got sort of tapped down, and now it's not really even an issue anymore. But we appreciate the fact you took that initiative years ago. Nobody else stepped forward to do it, and you did, so we appreciate that. All right, we have a presentation up front. Ms. Clint?
Good afternoon, mayors, mayor, members of council. Pleasure to be here tonight and talk to you a little bit about Stone Avenue and specifically kind of some things we've been looking at with respect to traffic and pedestrian safety. As you know, we are currently underway with our citywide pedestrian safety study. Stone Avenue is one of the high-volume corridors we're studying. And I just wanted to show you some of the information that we've collected on that study so far. StanTech is the consultant we're using to do that study. They're well underway, almost pretty much done with all their data collection, and now they're kind of into the analysis phase of that. And we do have some public, a public meeting and some stakeholder meetings coming up here real soon. But this kind of just shows you some of the crash data and statistics for Stone Avenue over the last four years. You can just kind of see the volume of crashes we've had, the types of crashes, and then the severity of those as well. You know, it's good to see that we've, the bike and the ped crashes are fairly low in comparison to the overall. But obviously, you know, we have a crash history out here, and we're excited to kind of, as StanTech continues to progress with those, with their safety study, to kind of see what recommendations comes out of that, of what we can do to make the road safer for pedestrians. As you know, we're seeing a lot of growth along Stone Avenue, seeing a lot of new development along the way. You had North Point on one end, Stone and Main, of course, developed a few years ago. So as Stone Avenue continues to grow, pedestrian activity is just really increasing there. So the pedestrian safety study is going to be critical to guiding us in what we can do, countermeasures we can implement along that road to help us improve safety. What we've, what we've seen so far in the data is a lot of similar characteristics as Augusta Street. As far as the type of facility, Stone Avenue, the volume of traffic it carries, it's a four-lane, you know, undivided, you don't have a turn lane except at, except at the Stone Avenue or Main Street intersection. And so a lot of these crash types are very similar to what we saw on Augusta Street. You've got a lot of rear-end, predominantly rear-end crashes, and typically that's a result of not having a center turn lane or safe lane to make a turn out of. The angles and the side swipes are also a good indication of, you know, a road that needs turn lanes. So it was very interesting to see the characteristics and how similar they are to Augusta Street. I know as we've, as we studied Augusta Street and began our pedestrian safety study, Stone Avenue was mentioned several times as a very similar type facility, and we're seeing similar characteristics as we get into the data. This just kind of shows the hotspots for these crashes, and as you can, as you can see, they're at the major intersections there, Rutherford there on your far left, and Main Street on, on the right there, and then kind of the other block. We studied this, basically our study areas from Park Avenue to Rutherford, that's the area of Stone, that we're kind of looking at, about 1.4 miles in total length. But this kind of shows the side east of Main Street, and you can see there at Bennett Street and the Wade Hampton intersection. And then see a really, really big hotspot down there at Park Avenue. So these are all things as we move forward with our studies, we want to continue to look at ways we can improve safety at these locations. Did have three bike and ped crashes over this four-year period, and you, two of those were right there at the Rutherford and Stone intersection, that is a very high-volume crash location from what we've seen, and then at Stone and Main. And it's interesting, and we saw this on Augusta as well, a lot of the bike-ped crashes that we're seeing are occurring at the intersections, which is a little counterintuitive in what you would think, where a lot, most of those intersections have signals and it's generally safer to cross there with crosswalks. The Stone-Rutherford intersection was also the location of the fatality, which happened in 2018. We've been taking some pedestrian counts at the Stone and Towns intersection and then Stone.
Clint, I'm sorry.
Yes.
On that last slide, the fact, I was kind of expecting the next slide, is the fact that you don't show any more, I guess maybe that one little ped-bike is, but there were no ped-bikes or fadals on Stone to the eastern side of it, is that, except for that one at North Main?
Yeah, over this four-year period.
Okay, so all those hotspots we saw among those collisions, none were fatal, none were pedestrian or bike.
Correct.
Okay, all right, next, sorry.
Yep. We have been discussing the idea of putting a pedestrian, improving our crosswalks, improving our, Stone Avenue, as you know, has residential on both sides of the road, there's a lot of pedestrians using that want to just cross Stone, whether it's just to get up to the schools, or they're crossing Stone to get to some of the new retail and commercial developments that have occurred along the way. So we have been exploring the idea with SEDOT of installing a pedestrian signal, and we've been looking at the vicinity of Wilton Avenue and Stone Avenue. That is a school crossing right now at that intersection, but it's unsignalized, and it's challenging to make that crossing during those peak hours in the morning. What's interesting about these counts, we've taken, we took these counts recently with traffic engineering, and what I find interesting is you look at both, the two intersections, and in the afternoon school pickup time, you got roughly the same number of people trying to cross at both locations. Stone and Towns, you have a signalized pedestrian signal, crosswalks and pedestrian signals, and then at Wilton, you really don't have any real traffic control there to make it a safe cross.
I can't believe anyone crosses at Wilton, ever, with that little blinking light.
Yeah, it's a blinking light there that brings some awareness to it, but it's, it's certainly could have been improved from a safety standpoint. And, and these numbers, you know, as we, as we discussed, these numbers, you know, don't represent the people who maybe otherwise would be walking more, crossing more if it were safer.
They drive their children, honey, they want to see their children in the afternoon.
Yeah.
So they drive them, and we know that for a fact.
Yeah. So as part of this, as you know, Stone Avenue is SEDOT road, so we've been doing a lot of coordination with SEDOT on, on the various things we've been looking at. It's interesting, SEDOT recently brought to our attention that the Stone and Main intersection has, has been identified from their safety office as an intersection that needs to be evaluated. They haven't determined the scope of improvements yet. It could be fairly, you know, it could be improvements just that just involve upgrading the signal, the signals there, the pavement markings, the ramps, the timing of the pedestrian crosswalks, just making things more visible. I don't know that it would warrant geometric improvements as far as moving curves and widening lanes or turn lanes, but they, it's interesting, they've identified this as a project that needs to be looked at, and we're continuing to coordinate with them. We're obviously looking for ways that we could partner on our projects as we continue to move forward with different project recommendations and where it makes sense for us to, to coordinate and even partner together.
And Clint, what was driving them, what calls him to pinpoint North Main and Stone versus any other or alternate intersection that you've already said, curious with inherent?
High volume of crashes there.
Crash rate.
And then, and then I will say, they also have identified Rutherford Street, so where it intersects with Stone and heading north, there's.
That's what I was kind of thinking, based on the size and competition.
Yeah, and they've identified that section of Rutherford Street as well for doing a bike pedestrian safety on it.
Is this a statewide list or a regional list?
This is a statewide list.
So we're 20% of the problem roads, intersections?
Not sure if these are all, all those Greenville's are in the city, but Greenville County, yeah.
Yeah.
But we're continuing to talk with DOT, they haven't determined the scope of their project yet. Them knowing that we're looking at Stone and are trying to do things certainly improves the chances of their project getting moved up in priority since they know we're currently working on that. We've done just in-house and working with the local DOT folks, we've done some, you know, kind of an internal safety audit. It needs to be a more detailed assessment done, but we've kind of taken a look at the street lighting along the road. We've, we've, we're working with Duke right now on replacing lights that were out, we're about done with that. We've also identified 19 other lights that were, have not been upgraded to LED, so we're in the process of getting those upgraded. They're going through the permitting right now with DOT on those. And the city has gone through and updated. We have, I think, two intersections or three intersections, Stone, Rutherford, Towns and Stone, and Main and Stone, where we have lights on top of our mast horn poles. We've recently upgraded those to LED lights. Through our assessment, we've identified some gaps in the lighting there around Hilli Street and Park Avenue on that end. So those are areas we were looking at with Duke as far as adding some additional lights on that end of the project. On the, just pedestrian safety enhancements, through the resurfacing of Stone Avenue, we've gotten a lot of the crosswalks upgraded to high, what we call high-visibility crosswalks that really make the, there's a ladder-style crosswalks, really make the pedestrian crossing stand out. We've recently got the, the bike lanes painted green, and that's been a significant improvement to bring awareness to the bike lanes through that intersection. That was a project we did in conjunction with SEDOT through their resurfacing work.
Want to note the sidewalks, yeah, there's a record amount of redevelopment going on on Stone in that stretch, and each time, as we should be doing on Lawrence Road, and we are, we're getting the sidewalks widened.
Yep.
You can already see the visible signs, and whereas Lawrence Road may take a while, Stone Avenue could very well be completed in about a year's time, we'll have wide side, wide, safer sidewalks with that whole stretch.
Yep. We're, that's, that's really making an impact. We, getting North Point done was a big step to accomplishing that, but you can see it along some of the other developments that are occurring right now. I believe the new townhome development there at Elizabeth Street has already got their sidewalk installed there. It's, makes a big difference from a pedestrian safety standpoint. Let's see, we, you know, we're evaluating the speeds right now, you know, 85th percentile cars are exceeding the posted 30 mile per hour speed limit. Been working with DOT, they're a little reluctant to change the speed limit, but they're not opposed to us evaluating that more and putting, they just need to be able to justify that. Things that, what they're really encouraging us to look at is what can we do from a traffic calming standpoint to really get the cars to slow down? So we've, we've installed radar speed signs in a few locations, I think we're going to look at adding some more closer to Park Avenue in that curve. Additionally, these, these Chevron signs that warn you of the curve, they make some of these signs that light up and bring more awareness to the, the change in curvature of the road, so we're looking at installing those. And then just continuing to look at ways we can streetscape through medians, through trees, and other streetscaping things to, to calm the road down. So those are all things we're doing. We'll continue to work with DOT as well on, you know, the appropriate speed limit for the road.
Is that 85th percentile at multiple points of measurement along the 1.4 miles?
Um, it's probably at one, maybe two locations.
Is it worse between Main and Rutherford or Main and Park?
The whole way.
I would, yeah, I would really have to look at the reports we did on that.
After, after living with and seeing the, the success of the Augusta Road restripe, I'm sure we'll be looking at where that may fit into the Stone Avenue plan as well, at least maybe in a section of it, such as that swerve down there closer to Park.
Yeah.
We'll be looking at all of that, I suppose.
Right, and I've got that, I'll get to that here shortly of things we're wanting, we feel like are worth exploring more. Part of that, similar to Augusta, involves getting a traffic analysis done. We, we, you know, we've, we've done some, and the local DOT office has some data they can provide us with, but really do need to take a deeper dive into just a detailed traffic study of the road to look at, you know, the volume, the turning movements, you know, using where people, origin, destination type information. This is just an excerpt from our 2019 Downtown Transportation Master Plan, where it kind of shows people who are coming off 385 and ultimately heading out to either Rutherford or Pete Hollis, the volume of cars that are using Stone Avenue as opposed to driving through town. So this is a little bit dated now because this was completed, I think the study was done in 2018 and completed in 2019, the analysis was done in 2018. So we would want to update this information as well as do a more detailed traffic assessment of Stone Avenue. What's interesting is when the 2011 Stone Avenue Master Plan was done, ADT was 20,000 cars a day. So in the last 11 years, we've, all the growth and changes, we've increased up to 25,000 cars a day on Stone Avenue.
Wow, that's terrible.
So Mayor, as you mentioned, some of the things we're, want to, you know, feel like are warranted to study further is just looking at all of our pedestrian crosswalks and our traffic signals and pavement markings. There's, there's the thing that we've recently implemented on Augusta Street, it's called leading pedestrian intervals, where you give the pedestrian a few extra seconds to start that crossing before any other traffic is moving. That has proven very successful in bringing driver awareness to pedestrians crossing at these intersections and giving the pedestrian more time to make the crossing. Of course, we're, the, the signal, the PHB pedestrian signal there at Stone and Wilton, that was approved as a NIB project, so we are, we are ready to engage the, we're going through the process of selecting engineering firms now, and that'll be one of the first projects we're ready to proceed with design on. We've had good conversations with SEDOT, they're supportive of pedestrian signal, just, there's more engineering needs to be done, and determining the exact location of that would have to be studied a little further. But very, very positive conversations with DOT on that, and we're at the point where close to being ready to engage a consultant to start the actual design. Again, adding landscape medians, wider sidewalks, just the typical streetscaping that we do is what we want to study further with these projects. So, and that just gives you a few of the options. I mean, we'll, we'll continue to look at access management. There's a lot of driveways along Stone Avenue. There's opportunities to combine driveways, there's opportunities to reduce redundant driveways, all that takes working with the property owners and business owners, but it, it also is, we can accomplish that also as projects, our properties redevelop along the road, and been very successful in kind of looking at access management with a lot of the redevelopment that has occurred. But the wide sidewalk, the landscaping, utility undergrounding, I think Stone Avenue is similar to Augusta, you got utility poles right off the back of the curb. It's just, just not safe. So we want to look at either undergrounding or relocation or a combination of the two. So I do think there are a few intersections like Bennett and maybe even Towns, I would say probably Bennett more of that. We maybe want to explore, do you need a turn lane there? You know, they don't have turn lanes right now. Another idea the DOT has actually dropped to us is maybe restricting the left turns during certain peak hour times of the day, just even if it's done as a pilot or a trial project, just to see what kind of impact that has. So these are all things that we're going to continue to explore as we move forward. The Stone and Main and Buncombe, Pete Hollis was, was one of the areas that our consultant is working on for the land management code rewrite. They're kind of doing some small area planning in these areas, and of course, anything we want to do on Stone Avenue needs to be coordinated with the, with the code recommendations and the rewrite for these land, small area plans. What's interesting is a recent survey from the, the code rewrite, obviously walkability and bikability along Stone Avenue and along this area is very important to the community. So that needs to be considered as we move forward. As far as next steps, I mean, we need to engage a consultant to help us with more detailed traffic analysis. You know, we could be prepared to do that in early summer, as soon as we, we're selecting consultants now to assist us with various projects in the Neighborhood Infrastructure Bond, in the upcoming capital projects. We would do a very similar approach to what we did on Augusta Street, there would be a number of community meetings along the course of a study. Of course, we're, we're currently in the pedestrian safety study, so that's going well, and that's scheduled to wrap up in November, so we'll have recommendations from that, and we'll have, we can look at also additional study from the traffic analysis, and looking at by the end of the year, really be able to come back with, you know, project recommendations for, for what we could do to address, you know, vehicular and pedestrian safety issues out here. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Cool, glad.
You want to go? Do you have any questions, Lonnie?
Oh, I want to add, I want to ask, have there been any discussions with the school? They, they may have information of the number of children who may walk to that particular area, even the PTA for Stone Academy, I'm just saying, have we had any, any discussion with them yet, or we plan that later?
We're engaging them at these stakeholder meetings that are coming up, May 3rd and 4th. We have two days of stakeholder meetings, and they are one of the stakeholders, the school district, as well as the neighborhood presidents have all been identified, and we'll be having those types of discussions with the pedestrian safety study.
Thank you. Clint, I just got a few questions. First of all, thank you so much for doing this. I know you talked a lot about cars, you did talk about pedestrians, and for me, it continues to be all about pedestrian safety, and I really appreciate you pushing that humanistic point of view with the DOT, and how important it is to recognize that though it's a United States highway, that in fact it cuts right through our neighborhoods and does act as a barrier between hundreds of homes in North Main, or on the other side with, you know, East Park and Heritage, kids in Viola trying to get to Stone Avenue, people, I think it's a little different, that we talked about this with Augusta Road. Augusta Road, sometimes you're forced onto Augusta Road to walk it, not necessarily the case in Stone Avenue, but, but it is, it's a barrier, as you know, so I can't thank you enough for getting on top of that and, and working with our DOT, and it sounds like we're making headway. You know, I know we've got an 85 percentile of people who follow the speed limit, which is even more reason to lower it, because people are going to follow it. And, and from my perspective, when I look at the traffic on Stone, I back up to it, I know it really well, and when I look at the traffic on Stone, it seems as if there's a lot of commercial traffic, which then tells me that historically, when vehicles come up 385 north, if they're going to Travelers Rest, Knoxville, Nashville, anywhere up there, that historically they get dumped off on Stone Avenue, and I think at one point that was probably made sense, not anymore, right? So looking to see how we can divert some of that traffic to other roads, really appreciate that. Miles per hour diverting traffic, I'm excited about the potential for, do we call it a HAWK system?
That's what I call it.
That's what I call it.
They're calling it PHV signals now.
PHV acronyms, PHV, HAWK's an acronym too, but that's a really big deal, and I don't think can be overstated how important that is to give moms and dads, right now moms and dads of 14, 15-year-olds are like, "I don't know, I'm going to drive you." But now with the HAWK system where cars have to stop, can give confidence to maybe your 12-year-olds or 13-year-olds that, that they can cross that road, so appreciate that. I love the idea of looking at reducing lanes. I don't necessarily think it needs to be done for, I mean, I'm not the expert, our StanTech folks out there, but, but certainly having turning lanes, having hours where you cannot take a left-hand turn, or just having a turning lane would naturally slow cars down. But I know everyone has gone around the curve, the curve, you know, where just, and, and I mean, those poor 18-wheelers, especially the ones who probably hadn't driven on there before, are thinking, "Oh, gosh, don't let me hit anybody," you know, and so it's tight.
It's tight.
So even looking at a potential for, without backing up traffic forever, but to look at somehow to reducing those lanes, or to make a middle lane for a while, I don't, you know, y'all are the experts, but just making that more, more safe. But I just don't want us to, appreciate the lighting, but just don't want us to lose the fact, and I know you haven't and I haven't, that this is, this, this is all about pedestrian safety, and this is all about our kids and our parents and our walkers being able to have confidence to go across Stone Avenue. One, one thing I want to ask you or our StanTech folks, I wonder, you know, I saw the data on crashes, right, car crashes, also from pedestrians, et cetera. I wonder if there's ever been, if there are studies out there that can, based on the number of crashes, they also can determine the number of near misses.
Right.
And don't, I'm sure it's out there, but I hear a lot about that too, which then, looking at your pedestrian count going across the street, people are like, "I'm not crossing Stone Avenue." I mean, it's Sunday morning, I'll cross Stone Avenue, but I'm not crossing Stone Avenue knowing that so many people have had near misses. So anyway, thank you very, very much. This is a big, big deal. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the near miss is a very important, you know, aspect that we And the near miss is a very important, you know, aspect that we look at in pedestrian safety. It's hard to quantify sometimes.
You can't, right. That's right.
There, there's a lot of new technology out there as far as using cameras to count traffic and that, and count pedestrian crossings and that sort of thing. So there's, there's some advanced technological features that could be used that we need to continue to look at.
Yeah. And it's, you know, I get it. It's a United States highway. It's a major thoroughfare. It just happens for one mile, go through some very key neighborhoods where people are trying to, trying to walk.
Well, I think getting those, all those cars to drive slower and calmer and making the pedestrian experience more comfortable and safer is, is kind of the goals.
Awesome. Thank you.
Clint, I, there's just someone I have in the back of my mind that's crossing at that area all the time. At Academy in North Maine, there's an audio that'll say, you have way too little time to cross, in my opinion. But I haven't noticed that audio command at other intersections, and I know we have at least one visually impaired person that's crossing there a lot. Do we, and all this HAWK system, and you, you've been better on staying on top of the technology, John, but as we input it, as we put it, 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 hawk, hawk, hawk crossings. But where we're doing crossings, especially here, I hope audio is included for visually impaired crossers.
It certainly is when we, when we have those folks kind of using these, these crossings and walking these areas. We don't, we don't normally do that just at every intersection. It's kind of on a very case specific. But I think we have possibly one at Lewis Plaza on Augusta Street. We may have audio there. I would have to confirm that. But, but yes, it's certainly another.
I mean, visually impaired, just because I know one person doesn't mean there are more visually impaired crossers. So I thought it was kind of a standard, but.
But the, the reason I, I support that is because if you look at, you just showed us that we, four of those intersections are high on the list.
Yeah.
And not necessarily visually impaired, distracted impaired. You got people who are looking at the wrong stuff crossing the street, which is the reason I'm sure some people get hurt. But it's worth the audio. Yeah, particularly those intersections that you have listed on, on that map, all of those are paid.
Right. Yeah, there's audio to, to tell you when it's safe to cross. There's also audio that, that brings attention to pedestrians.
I mean, it's that fast beat that says you're running out of time. So if you were walking assisted with a cane, that's, that's the only cue they know that they're running out of time to get across there. So just encourage you to look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a Board and Commission appointments tonight.
Yes, sir. And we do have some recognitions prior to the recommendation of appointments.
Arts and Public Places, Councilmember Dow.
Okay, so we're going to do recognition and appointment in the same swoop or do all recognitions and then circle back? Okay. I'd like to say the utmost of thanks to Katie Skoloff. She's been serving since 2013 on Art in Public Places. She is rolling off of that board with another place to go, I am told.
That's right.
Many thanks to Katie. She's been a pivotal member in the Village of West Greenville community and on Art and Public Places.
Design Review Board, Councilman Dworkin.
Yes, I'd like to say a big thank you to two people that spent so much time on our DRB Neighborhood Board. Big deal, often thankless job, but boy, they, they did a heck of a job. Allison Tucker and Matt Tindall.
And I want for the Design Review Board Urban, I have two people, Mitch Leahy and Danielle Fontaine. Mitch has been there since July 2015, and Danielle's been there since August 2015. And so we appreciate them and thank them for their service.
Danielle is in, is with us tonight.
Danielle is with us tonight. I can't imagine the DRB without Danielle. I can't, is it going to function? I don't know. I can't imagine. Okay.
Thank you, Danielle.
Get you back on something, I'll tell you what. Won't let you off that easy.
Because they will reappoint you in something.
Okay, some new appointments though, Art in Public Places, Councilmember Dow.
Yes, it is my great privilege to recommend the following to a full term each beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2025, to the Art in Public Places Committee. Carrie Murphy for reappointment and Kathy Lee for initial appointment. And I don't see them here tonight.
Any other nominees? If not, all in favor, say aye. Are those two opposed? They are so named. Design Review Board, Neighborhood, Councilman Dworkin.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it is my honor to recommend the following individuals to a full term each beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2024. We have Fred Gutier, we have Aaron Barr, and we have Laura Godfrey.
Stand up.
Stand up, Aaron. We see you back there.
Yeah, both of you, thank you so much. All in favor of those, those nominees, as, as so, as the motion wasn't a moment. Councilman Dworkin, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are so named. Thank you. Design Review Board, the Urban Board.
As Councilmember Dow indicated, Katie Skoloff does have a place to go. Hi, it's my great pleasure to nominate her or recommend her, nominate and recommend her for a position, a two-year term on the Design Review Board to a, a two-year term is a full term beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2024.
Okay, Katie Skoloff has been nominated or named again. Any others? All in favor of Katie Skoloff, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. She is so appointed. Airport Commission, Councilmember Stahl.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend the following to a full three-year term, beginning May 1st, 2022, and ending April 30th, 2025, Mark Clark.
Okay, Mark Clark is so nominated. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always, ayes have it. Public Safety Citizen Review Board, Councilmember Fleming.
Yes, thank you so much. I'd like to recommend the appointment of John Hammond to the unexpired term ending October 31st, 2023.
Okay, Mr. Hammond is so nominated. Any of the nominees? If not, all in favor of Mr. Hammond, say aye.
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 Those ayes have it. He is so named. Councilmember Stahl.
I would like to recommend the following to appointment on the Youth Commission, Winnebago Bannister from Greenville High School.
You're not here tonight? No, okay. Bannister is nominated. Any others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those ayes have it. Municipal Election Commission, Councilmember Brazington.
Yes, I'm proposing what is essentially a term adjustment to the terms of the Municipal Election Commission members. I need to read these notes so I don't confuse myself for each of you. So please indulge me. As council worked through the new appointment process in 2021, a potential issue arose involving the Municipal Election Commission. You see, the terms for the Municipal Election Commission are, were adjusted in 2021 to end on October 31st of odd years, which is the same year, odd years, that our municipal elections are conducted. Last year, a reappointment was made in 2021. However, if we had made a first-time appointment instead, that individual, that appointee would not have had time to complete an orientation session, nor would that individual have been engaged throughout the election preparations over the course of the year, thereby being ill-equipped and ill-prepared to fulfill the real meat of that responsibility. So for this reason, I bring forward a request to adjust the terms of the Municipal Election Commission to expire during the spring cycle, or April 30th, to be specific, of each even year. This will have the effect of adding six additional months to each of the three commissioners' terms. The duration of the terms, however, six years, will remain the same. This is just a one-time adjustment to the actual start and finish dates of the terms. How did I do, Camilla?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Turning to the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Regular Agenda 15A, first reading.
An ordinance to annex approximately 2.436 acres of real property located at 533 Woodruff Road and to provide the zoning designation of C3 Regional Commercial District.
So moved. Motion is second. Anything you want to say?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I would like to just say that we continue our annexation efforts throughout the city, and we are excited to bring in another property along Woodruff Road. The proposed plan for this property is for a private school. And so I appreciate all the work of the planning staff and working with this applicant to get them through to this point.
Okay. Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15B.
An ordinance to amend Section 19-2.2.4 Neighborhood Meetings of the Code of Ordinances to provide exceptions to the neighborhood meeting requirements.
So moved. Motion is second.
Yes, sir. Again, earlier this year, council asked staff to come up with various ways to remove some of the barriers to the annexation process. And we presented that at the last meeting to you all, and this is a follow-up on one of those items in which that if the zoning is the same classification or similar coming in from the county into the city, that the neighborhood meeting requirement would therefore be removed from the process.
Clerk Colerole.
And Mayor, I'm sorry, I received the first. Who gave me the second?
The word is down to work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15C.
An ordinance to amend, amend Section 19-4.5.3F, Use of Motor Vehicle, Trailer, or Shipping Containers for Sale, Service, Storage, or Other Businesses of the Code of Ordinance to Allow Mobile Food Vendors at City Approved Events and Community Events.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, sir. This is a modification to the ordinance. It doesn't affect anything else related to any of our other ordinances, such as business license, but it's a modification to the zoning ordinance to allow for food trucks at large residential amenity areas.
Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 15D.
An ordinance approving the Fifth Amendment to the City of Greenville Firefighters Pension Fund Plan.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Good evening, Mayor White, Council. This ordinance will allow to $10,000 overtime pay worked in a final year of an employee to calculations for their retirement. Currently, only the employee's base pay and special ops goes towards retirement. This will put us more in line with other city employees.
All right. Any questions? Clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Dworkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thank you.
That's good work right there.
16A.
A resolution to amend the city's fund balance policy.
Second.
Motion is second. You had explanation earlier. Any further questions about this? Clerk, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it. 16B.
We do not have a 16B, sir.
16.
Our, our last item was 16A.
That was it.
My version does. You must have the early version. I do, I have the earlier version of the agenda. Sorry. You'll have to wait to see what the magic. It was a good one. All right, thank you.
Just a couple items, Mayor.
Okay.
For council, building on our front here can change the world economic development marketing campaign. We were recently recognized by LinkedIn, they've been very good to us recently, as the most optimistic city in America for business.
Outstanding.
Mm-hmm.
Feel good about that one.
That's the second time LinkedIn has recognized Greenville, South Carolina. And the last time it did, we, you know, we got an impact from it.
We ended up on 60 Minutes.
Yeah, that's right. 60 Minutes was part of that too.
Couple of things for your calendars. We have Ken scheduled public meetings to gauge community interest in two new trails that will provide connectivity from Main Street to the Greenville Zoo and extend the Sliding Rock Creek Trail in the Nickel Town community. The Zoo Trail Phase 1 public meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 4th, from 5:30 to 6:30. And the Sliding Rock Phase 2 public meeting will be held on Thursday, May 5th, from 5:30 to 6:30. And both of those will be at the Nickel Town Community Center. Come out on that. McDaniel Avenue Bridge and Sewer Replacement looks like it's going to start on June 27th. The trail under McDaniel Bridge will be closed to allow the installation of the sewer bypass system. And McDaniel Bridge will be closed to vehicle traffic starting on July 5th. The closure is expected to last three to six months. Also reported, I got a letter from FLOR. This is positive. They're going to cease their lease agreement on May 21st at midnight. So that'll allow us to continue to move forward with our planning efforts and ultimately get our public safety municipal court moved to, to the FLOR campus. That's all I have tonight.
And Greenville was featured also on CBS Morning News on Sunday, Sunday morning. A scene from Falls Park was their nature moment. And you didn't see that? Yeah, yeah. I didn't see it, but I think we got, I've got, I see it now. A lot of phone calls that he missed. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say to everyone, thank you particularly to, to the council, to the city manager, to Angie and Tara and all of the staff, in particular the police, who did so much on April 19th, when my mom's statue was there. And I just want you to know that there are people in the neighborhood who must be taking to her and sitting out there watching her as if she's going to do something. But just sitting there and coming and looking and bringing children. So people cannot wait till May 19th. So I just appreciate you. It's, that's the reason I was not on the program because I knew I wouldn't be able to hold it together, et cetera. And we are still finding out some people my mom helped, and she died in 1996. So I'm just saying, I appreciate all you're doing and all the love that you show. It was just wonderful. I don't know who livestreamed it, but honey, all my friends, all over America was calling me and saw it. Particularly my friends in Charleston. I don't, I don't know who did it, but all I'm saying is thank you so much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
It was a great morning. And for the record, you did lose it, but you deserved it at that point. But no, it was wonderful. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.